Okay.
So.
Okay. Now I don't have to touch this except to switch back and forth, right?
Or to add people. Should.
Saying like gastor, I mean. Oh, I do the whole, all right.
Is that it?
Ready.
Okay, start recording.
Start recording.
Is it going?
Singles.
Okay.
Singles.
Evening, as our city council meeting, um, June seventeenth, thanks for coming. And, uh, with that, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor, of course, here. Council Penegras, here. Council Phillips, here. Council Rizorfer, here. Council Spring, here. And then Mike should be online. Joe said he was gonna be here, I don't know where he's at. Yeah, Kane is here, and Rachel.
Okay, very good. Our time is approval of the agenda. Make a motion, we approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Question?
Yeah, I would like to add, I would like to add Jason's letter from May twenty-seventh for discussion under under new business.
And pull that out and either put into a workshop or to minimize our agenda here. What specifically do you want to discuss about that?
Well, there's a.
Maybe.
We haven't ever seen any of the contracts, so. Okay, we haven't seen either of these contracts, he talks about the one that, one that they, the previous, uh, previous contract for the first responders and the contract that went out, second, the replacement contract. We haven't seen either one of those, and I just think we should see them and should have a discussion. Then I'd like.
Well, that's, um, your. Sure, discuss those at a workshop too, or not workshop, a special meeting too, so.
Be more beneficial if you can actually be able to provide them, to talk about not having them.
Well, the only thing that there is with that, and I can understand your point with the workshop, Ryland, off of doing that.
I missful, special meeting, special council meeting, we can, had specific agendas on there to discuss.
The only thing that there is, is sometimes I think that the city should be aware of it on some of these things with the contracts and that, that we need to bring that, so it's, it's in city business so they can work on it.
Sure.
Okay, workshops won't do that, and so.
It's not a workshop, you said it was a special meeting.
It's a special meeting.
That is.
It's an open meeting, eh? It's a special city council meeting with a specific agenda. Um, and we can, if you'd like to talk about contracts in general, I think that'd be a good place to discuss it.
Well, I don't. This is, this is about the first responders contract. We, I don't recall seeing the previous contract, nor a copy of the new one.
Oh, so you're talking about the township.
Yeah, yeah, but we're talking about here.
That's not our, that's a supervisor's discussion. They approve the contracts.
I didn't say that, I said, I've never, we've never, I've never seen a copy of the, the original contract to start them, or the second. Jason, in his, in his letter claimed he'd been working on it for a year, I guess it'd never been proposed for anybody to even see it.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I think that'd be a good idea, if you want to have an agenda for a special item.
I mean, I can certainly talk to you about that, too.
Well, no, that thing, I think this has got to be public on what's going on with this, Jason, not just, you know, individual for us to do.
And I'm saying that if he wants to come in and talk to me, he can come in and talk to me as well.
I, I bring stuff, I bring stuff from city council meetings, placed on the agenda here at the meeting, because in, in special meetings, it gets nixed up and don't get put on. So that's why I bring it here to put it on there.
No, I, I can appreciate that comment, and we were trying to take a more constructive systematic approach that if we we start adding discussion, not, not that we can't add, but the point is, we're here to make motions to take actions, and you're talking about a discussion, and I think that would be better perceived for the residents and for the parties involved to have it at a special meeting.
Okay, I, I also want to pull a, pull the Gold Rush license agreement from the consent agenda for discussion.
That was approved in May.
Which now, it's on.
Well, I see, I see, I see, I see mistakes in it, so that's why I bring it up.
The Gold Rush agreement is, I agree, is, is time sensitive, and I think that's probably, or you have a discussion to add to the agenda, so.
Okay.
But I think that's really the only item I'd like to discuss, or to have the council discuss.
Would you like to put that in the business? It's already, it's already on, it's in the consent agenda, so.
Well, we need to pull the part, pull it out. So. Put under unfinished business. Add it to B I number eight.
Unfinished, the Gold Rush.
That connection, that's action out of the consent agenda. Have a motion to. Pull out the Gold Rush twenty twenty-five license agreement. And put that under unfinished business. Neither, I'm in a bunch of the motion. Think none, I. I'll request for the motion to amend the agenda by pulling out the Gold Rush license agreement to the unfinished business. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose?
No.
Uh, next time is our Gold Rush, excuse me, our public forum, it's a three-minute time limit per person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concern. To address the city council during the public forum, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the white form that's at the podium. Speakers will be recognized only once, and Rachel will show a green card to show her. If you started, the yellow card indicates thirty seconds left, and the red card indicates you have reached your three-minute time limit, so must stop. So with that, if somebody would like to speak, public forum, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and put in the card.
Hello, uh, do I address everyone, or? You guys? My name's Michael Tater, I live at five-ten Vintage Road Northwest, Orinoco, Minnesota, five-five-nine-six-zero. Next to my property is, uh, High Plains Co-op, they have a very large propane tank, and, uh, they acquired it four or five years ago, I'm not exactly sure, but from what I understand, when they acquired that property and put the large LP tank there, they were going to plant a line of trees to kind of hide its unsightliness. Unfortunately, all those trees have died, I went out and counted them this weekend, there's twelve trees staggered, you know, they got the stakes posted to them, they tried to keep them up, but I'm not sure that they ever watered them, is my guess. Uh, I just would like to see those replanted. Maybe we could look into the agreement they had when they purchased that land.
What's the address of it, you know?
Well, my property's five-ten Vintage Road Northwest, Orinoco, I'm not sure, well, that wouldn't have a home address, it's right next to my property, though. I really, I just want to see those trees planted behind the tank, if that was the agreement, I'd like to see it go there. I, I spend a lot of time to beautify my, my property, and the tank's kind of unsightly. Guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's Mike. Any else who'd like to speak? Or anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in public forum? Second call for public forum.
Hi, Ryland, I'm sorry, mayor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joy.
Okay, thank you, um, I just want to make a couple of comments, uh, my name is Joy Bertzinger, six-hundred-sixth Street Southwest, Orinoco. And just a couple of comments about the May meeting, um, where there was a decision about the age fifty-five-plus seniors meeting. The seniors group, age fifty-five, respects your decision. I just wanted to clear up a misstatement by council that seniors received a grant from the Orinoco Fire Relief Association. That's incorrect, the seniors did not, uh, age-friendly Orinoco area did, it was for a hundred and sixty-five dollars for printing of the age-friendly Orinoco area brochure, and age-friendly Orinoco area appreciates that. Um, the age-friendly Orinoco and the fifty-five-plus group are separate organizations, we are just helping the seniors group to revitalize the group per their request. Um, we also asked the city council to understand the importance of inclusion of all ages when considering the budget. The city spends thousands of dollars on city parks, parks that are not accessible to all residents regardless of their age, um, especially those with mobility issues, so we are just asking that you look, um, at a way to improve the access as you go through your budget process. Thank you for your time.
So, third and final call. Seeing, uh, no others, call before we close, I'll be carrying at six forty-two. Thanks for everybody's comments. Uh, so, uh, legal services, there's a couple items in front of us that we have an opportunity to read, the first one is, um, Pine Southwest. I make a motion that we approve the Pine Southwest customer, uh, security agreement.
I'll second that.
It's written in our, it's a template form, that's filled in with the appropriate names, identifications, and there's a, for the size of the acre, there's a five-thousand-dollar fee that is assigned to it, and, uh, just that whole process is, we receive a check from the developer that is held, and, uh, we pay injuring and any, uh, legal services regarding, uh, the review of the plans, um, and the agreement, settlement agreement that goes towards it, and whatever is not used in the project, closed out, the remaining balance of that security agreement is, uh, given back to the developer.
You say, you say that, uh, that goes, that fee on that is according to the size of the acreage?
I believe that's the way it's.
Yeah, it's in the fee schedule, yeah, based on the acreage that the city put that in or adopted that, so.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose? Group? The next item is a river bin, uh, customer security agreement. With River Bin, the, uh, this is outlot A that we've talked about the last split, last, this month. So with that, I make a motion, we approve that CSA agreement.
I'll second that one.
Questions or comments about that?
I just think, I just think it's wrong to require a development, I just think it's wrong to require a development agreement to split a lot. It's, uh, something for Joey about.
Well, it is not a development agreement, it's simply a cost-security agreement, um, and so there are, there is some work within the public right-of-way, there's obviously some uh, review of site and grading plans, things like that, so it's essentially to cover the city's costs, and make sure the developer performs their obligation. Um, it is a small project, and because it's such a small project, we wouldn't move forward with the formal development agreement, it's simply two lots. Uh, but it is a mechanism for the city to recover its, its costs.
I guess, I guess my biggest, biggest fear of seeing this go through, get approved like that, is, are we gonna require anybody who wants to do a lot split, split to go through this process? Something I don't think we should have to do, everybody should have to do, anyone who wants to split a lot. If you started, if you started here, where does it start?
Well, one of the main reasons is it helps covers, um, people that are doing the lot split to cover the engineering costs and do the plans, as opposed to taxpayers getting that.
It's really, it's, it's more than splitting a lot, the lot split was done, but now we're grading a lot, where it's extending sewer and water services to the lot, um, putting in some drainage facilities, driveway facilities, those types of things, and it's a little bit different than just a simple lot split.
Well, the driveway facilities for each lot, because the developer.
For each lot, yes.
The developer.
As well as the.
Themselves, correct?
In conjunction with his site plan for the individual building permit, which he would need the information that he developed anyway. And then there's also a driveway to the existing lift station there.
They're requiring him to put in driveway for the lift station.
As we discussed last month, yes.
I think that, again, that should be passed to the taxpayers, I mean, if that's.
It should be passed to taxpayers, so, should be, should be on the.
But.
I think it's a good best practice.
This is.
And if they don't use it, it goes back.
It's the escrow, so anything that doesn't get used, a project like this, I would imagine the vast majority of that's gonna go back, or something like this.
Well, I mean, and it's.
It's part of both than you think, okay.
Yeah, but it's the drain field and everything that they got to take care of, so.
The drain field's coming out.
It's already out.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, there was a lot of work that's been done there to get to the point with where it is, so.
I just want us to end up getting used for lot splits for neighbor across the street and such.
Do we have any of those lots sold that you know of, that part of it?
I think one is pending, yes. They're anxious.
You know which one it is?
I don't, you know. I think they're anxious to pull this one out.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose?
None. Just because of that.
Approved, okay, um, in your packet, was the April Sheriff's Monday's report, and the May? Sheriff Friends here, has a question, I talked to him earlier, you had anything to share with us unless you have some questions for him? I have been, uh, more active in, uh, traffic stops, so presence is being seen and felt.
That was good, I saw it today on Minnesota Avenue, it was, it was nice to see somebody stop, because they, they scream through Minnesota Avenue, so.
Also some, uh, and first on, second avenue southeast and Amberline Drive. Trolling their fuel, so that's been pressed by the residents.
We've been working with them to try to get that, you know, enforcement, and during different times, we're trying to pinpoint, you know, higher traffic time versus, you know, lower traffic times happening, and so now I think they've been really receptive to that and good to that, uh, try and get people here during different parts of the day, um, 'cause I see the same thing, when I'm driving around different parts, you know, there's certain times you're gonna see them flying through there, because it's not often that the cops are there, so we're trying to keep them guessing, if you will.
I think it's good, absolutely, you know, and you have a lot of boat traffic, and everybody too heading over towards that lake now, so.
Right, uh, Public Works, packet, uh, it's a, like, a part-time custodian. Question?
I make a motion to, um, to bring your guy back again, what was his name again?
Ezra.
Ezra, yeah, he was really good.
Second.
Uh, I did have one question on, on that, that you have, and up to thirty hours awake, how many hours was he normally working here for doing this?
Fifteen to twenty.
Was he running that much, okay.
Any other comments, I think it's a great opportunity for Doug German to do that for us, so. None, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Two or three minutes around the packet. Planning on zoning, there's, you haven't had a discussion, that's covered later with the streets and roads. Our department. Yes.
We had, yeah, we had a couple of different grants that were there that, um, we're working on, the armor grant has been approved, and that taken care of, which is gonna be great, gonna help us on lots, but what we need for the radios, and to work off of that, and then the other one, which is forty thousand dollars on that, uh, or thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty, to be exact, uh, with, with that, with the quote.
That's for the armor grant?
That's for the, the armor grant.
This is the one that's been coming up quite a bit, and we're, we got it, take care of, everything's good, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I feel sorry for Jason, developing, back and forth, and having. Mostly the state was the problem.
State, yeah.
And so, just in general. It'll help us get eight radios.
Grants are awesome.
With the minimal cost, or is that the other one, that's the two thousand, the matching?
That was, uh, the armor was a two thousand, I think, wasn't it?
Armor.
Most of that. So that's what being the one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, you know, the other one that, that's, there is a DNR grant, that we got approved as well. And that's for eight thousand dollars for matching, and that's gonna be used for pagers for the fire and also for the first responders.
Well, the grants in the past, uh, like this, have, um, been, they come to the city in a form of resolution, and, uh, we've done that for a lot of years. And I think this is two cases of, of, you know, I believe a resolution should be made for these type of grants, so it's documented, uh, and also for our auditors to know where the funds are coming from that support our department. And there is a path that we've used in the past, of, by resolution, these, uh, donations, whether it's this amber grant or the DNR grant, uh, it's, it comes in, but then it's dedicated to the fire department equipment fund, and that's, because that's where the payment comes out when everything has to be paid, so uh, I, I fully appreciate the effort that's gone into the grants and just getting the funds and everything, but I think it's just, we need to have a better documentation of the funds, especially in dollar amounts like this. Because it is important to audits, because we've been asked about different funds, or current audit that we're talking about this year, uh, funds that go back a pretty few years, and they're asking for resolutions to support where that money came from.
So here's my, my question on that would be, we do the grant, like they did this, but yet we don't know if we're gonna get a grant or anything, so it would be at this point in time that you would do a resolution then, to be able to put it in, otherwise it would be ahead of what's going on, so what I could do is make a motion that we put that in as a resolution for next month, to be able to include these in that way, and that way we can put it in.
I'd support that.
Okay, so let's do it that way, and, because otherwise if we just apply for a grant, we don't want to do a resolution if we don't know, we're not gonna get it.
So I'm just on that point, because it says it was awarded.
Uh-huh.
So you, you do have the funds, you know?
It's, it's a re-in, reimbursable grant, so we have to spend it first and then submit it for reimbursement, is the thing.
They've already been.
So that's, that's where it gets tricky, like with, I think reimbursable grants, it might be better to put a resolution first, and this is on us as city trying to figure this out, and this was whatnot, but yeah, like, if, if we're getting a reimbursable grant, it might be better for us to do the resolution first, whereas if it's one, like, where we're gonna say, we're gonna give you money to hold on to, and then take from that, then doing the resolution after we decided to take that money on, would probably be the more ideal point, so we can still get resolutions done for these, it's just a learning curve, just like with the charitable donations, from the fire relief, those, there were grants that, or not grants, there were, uh, resolutions that were done previous years before I was even here, didn't know that was a thing, that that's how those were being done, and so we're gonna start doing that as we bring those in, that way we've got tracks of those as well, just to keep it, so there's some things where, that's on us, the city staff are learning this, on me, we're, we're getting that figured out and straightened out, so we'll get those.
I, I still, with, with that, and I understand what you're saying on that, Jason, I agree, but my question again is, at what point do you do a resolution until we've been awarded the grant? You know, so we wouldn't do a resolution prior to.
It's just there to say, yeah, we would accept this if it came through.
Okay.
I mean, we could do it at any point, and if we don't get it, I mean, we don't get it, it doesn't hurt anything to have the resolution there, that we would accept this if it comes through, and we just document that it came through, because what we'll be able to do then is, this is cool with the new system, we've been having a lot of fun the last couple days. With the finance software, we can actually now attach those resolutions into the software, so as we track it, everything can be there, and we can have that documentation into the program with it, so that it's all there, ready to go, so, and then if we don't, then we don't need to worry about it, and it's just, there is a resolution we had that we just didn't get the grant for, so.
I think we can get a process drawn up for next meeting on how we're going to be accepting grants, like, the process for the resolutions. Like, if, like, you said, if it's, so we've gotta pay it, and then they reimburse us, there's one process, if we're, if they're just gonna give us all some money, there's a second process. Is that possible to, for next month, to? We want to encourage the grant writing.
Yeah.
And we want it to be a very clear process for us moving forward, I think that's where we need to be, right?
Yeah, I don't, in the past, it was a lot of, hey, we want to, like, even with EDA, it was, we want to apply for this grant, council says, yeah, go for it, I think if we have that resolution that says, here's a resolution saying council approved to apply for the grant, no matter what, I think we just put that at the beginning for any, any grants we want to do, I think that's just gonna be, make it ten times easier for us, for every department, for everything, and, okay, we won't apply for this grant, and we can do a template resolution where it's just a couple paragraphs to get put in, that just explain what the grant is.
Hey, it seems like we're going to do an extra steps for requiring a resolution to go forward to apply for a grant, that would, that's kind of what you just said, that, you know, put a resolution forward and apply for it.
Or.
I would think, I would think you need to.
Could, I think we need.
Up till the grants already.
We would need to know what the match would be, we would know when the, when the funds we have to give out would be, and how fast we would be, so that's what the resolution would be, to inform us on kind of the timeline of that, right?
Well, with, with, with what came here, it explains to us what, what we need to do, now, from here forward, you put, do the, you do the resolution. I can't see, I don't.
These ones are a little weird, weird, because they've already been awarded, right, so they've already went through that grant process. So now we're just wanting to make sure that documentation is there to support.
And I, I think it's important to do it right away, because like, in innocence, right, it goes through, it gets awarded, and we got to sign, saying we want the money, and we're like, we want this, so we can make sure we're, we've got our spot, versus, okay, well, cool, now let's wait until the next council meeting, or whatever the case may be, to do a resolution, I think if we have that resolution at the start, and most grants when you apply for them, you have all the information upfront as to, okay, is there going to be, you know, is reimbursable or not, is this gonna be any upfront cost to the entity, all that's usually laid out in the grant information, so we'll be able to provide that upfront, and if we have a template format that we can use in the city for that, it makes it super easy for anyone to just plug and play a couple paragraphs.
I just want to see stumbling blocks for people writing grants, or.
No, and it's, it's really gonna be, we just need the information from the city so we can put the resolution together and have it ready to go.
So because we have this.
It won't be helped. Yeah, and they'll have the template for the, you know, and we'll get it, and then if we need to clean up, you know, whatever on our end, we'll clean it up, make sure it's good to go, and we put the packet.
I think, like, doing it earlier is gonna be better, because if we have somebody who writes. I think like doing it earlier is gonna be better, because if we have somebody who writes for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that's a thirty percent match. And they get awarded that, and they come to us to approve it, and we say, well, we don't have seventy-five thousand dollars to match this, so we're gonna deny this grant. You did all this work for us, sorry. So we have the opportunity to go upfront and say, this might not be worth our time this year, s- situation.
We've out, it's out of my mind.
Yeah, so are we gonna put that in then for a couple resolutions and for these two then for next council meetings, if we have them on record then?
Is that holding anything up?
No.
I mean, they're.
Council's already approved it, we've signed it, we've agreed to it, so it's it's really not.
Documentation.
It's after the fact, if we can, it's, just tell me what you guys want done.
Yeah, I I think we should have it, we need to have that documentation, I need to have that.
I feel like the armor grant, we've probably already done that once sometime in the past, spending a long time, since this one's been going on.
Early, early two thousand is when the first armor grants came out. So when they first implemented the armor system, but this is our first one since. So we just, basically, we just need to go ahead and say, can we please order our eight radios?
So it's like the state farm grant, uh, that was awarded here recently, that would have been a good one to document too. It's just a, it's just a process, I do think, I like the idea of one type of process, outdo- outlining. And for the reason is that, uh, and this is something we need to probably check out, but donations to the fire relief. Me donations to the fire relief, because it's internal treasury account, doesn't come to the cities, you buy things with that out of the council. To me, fire relief donations just wouldn't need to fall into that category of of resolution. But I do think the fire department. That's up for discussion, or we wanna check what's legal on that, but I think it's our accountants, so I do think it's something to document and clear, so it's just in those policies.
Do we have the state farm resolution that was done with that or not?
Don't know, I'd have to go back and look.
I mean, if.
If, I mean, if I don't know, I'm guessing maybe not, but like I said, because I know a lot of our grants, it was, they would come to council, present it, say, hey, we wanna apply for this, and council would say yes. And then when it came time to purchase, they would just, if they got it, they would say, we got this, we rewarded this, and move forward with stuff. So, but I think if we can have more, you know, clear definition of what needs to be done and a better order for it, that would be great.
I'm just saying if we're missing that state farm one, let's go ahead and do that also at the same time, so that we've got everything that's that's passed. Bring it all, you know, up to current.
Bring that back in future meeting. There's also a motion to approve, I make a motion, we approve hiring Trevor Zahn.
Second that.
Anybody see an application or a lift that?
I don't see an application in town.
I don't see an application, you're either. Uh, was there an application submitted to that should have been in the packet?
No.
Had in the past.
Yeah, no, there were, there's.
There was and was.
I can forward that to Jason.
Rachel.
Forward it to Rachel. Or to Rachel. Well, yeah, put it to me too.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
O's? I don't see an application.
Who was the second on that?
Jim Chan.
Four one. We approved those equipment purchases, are we waiting for the resolution for B?
For which one?
For the grants. Are we waiting for the resolution next month?
Um, I, that's what I had put down for resolutions to come next month, and that's why I put state farm in there as well.
Need to go back, I guess.
Does that mean we can pull the trigger and order them or not?
That's what I was trying to get.
Yeah. Let's accept them, okay, if we wanna do that, so I make a motion to accept them so we can move ahead with us. And then put it in writing for the resolution for next month.
I'd second that.
Thank you.
So you can purchase them, and then we'll get documentation for next month.
Comments?
No, all those in favor?
Working backwards.
Sorry for the confusion, we kinda went sideways, discussion, there's all the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Right, um. There's awareness about the explorers program, it's been started with fire to accommodate first responders. Two or three, your explorer group?
We currently have three uh fire explorers, and we're going to add, uh, and they're actually doing medical as well. Uh, but we're going to add one person, we'd like to add one person, uh, one explorer, um, for just medicals. She's expressed interest in just the medical side.
Great program. Streets and roads.
I have a quick question on that.
Yep.
Do you have like a program guideline set up for that?
I do.
Okay.
Oh, I'll forward that to you too.
Yeah.
Okay. And Rachel. Just curious, me former explorer myself, so. Yep, you got it.
So in our packet, there's a um. Hold a memo of Kane and uh regarding nine different projects. Kane, if you'd like to come forward to answer any questions of what you're proposing and. This is um. Background, yes, please, thank you. So in your proposal, we've, we currently have fifty thousand dollars in our street maintenance program. And um. We've already approved a um. Our local pavement management program, which is. Standtech, Joe is working on that. But in the meantime, um, that'll be forthcoming this summer, it's taking time and Joe's working on that. So we need to take advantage of the funding we have budgeted for this year. So Kane's come up with a list of proposals and um, so if you had a chance to look at that. Nine different areas, anything in particular that? Have a question? Kane?
Yeah, I can answer questions. Uh, this, these nine projects, they're kind of uh quantity pricing, so we can pick and choose. Uh, you know, some of the items like seal coating, the uh parking lot out here, that could come out of repair and maintenance for the community center. Same with like the public workshop, we could remove that seal coating item and and use it under repair maintenance shop. So there's some flexibility there, but uh largely quantity pricing for striping, uh crack filling, seal coating. Painting of curves, striping of lines, uh, a little bit of curb, a little bit of blacktop patching. Just some various projects throughout town that don't really require a an engineered design. They just require um contractors, boots on the ground, and a little direction from public works, so.
Um, I've got one question that there is on on the crosswalk, which was brought to our attention last council meeting off of that, which I think is great.
Yep.
Um, on on that, there were a couple of signs that I had requested, one on each side going through there, I didn't see those down. Are those pretty easy to find, those signs?
I've purchased the signs, I've got the signs, I've got the hardware.
Okay.
I'm I'm ready to move forward with crosswalks with the signage and uh, I'm ready for that.
Okay.
So that's that's separate from this, you know, we we purchased that from a vendor, all our signed products, you know.
I make a motion, we approve um public works proposal for the twenty-twenty-five street repairs.
Well, second that.
Any other comments? I think it's, it covers a wide area, but it does, you know, the past three or four years, it's been, the public works has been solely um working on the sewer and water project. And now we need to try and catch up on a lot of different things that we haven't done recently, so. Any other comments? Uh, just one comment, in your request on your memo, you said request not to exceed ten thousand, do you mean twenty?
You know, it's it's actually twenty thousand, the uh, the quantities came back and they're they're a lot higher. But, you know, there's gonna be room for uh some later projects this year. I've got a few culverts I wanna replace, uh, a little bit more patching in the fall, some seal coating, some crack filling. So we're kinda gonna do a a summer round of projects, we're gonna get the pavement plan from Standtech. And then we're gonna do a a round of uh fall projects, get ready for winter. So I do intend to use up the remaining funds in the streets uh budget, that's my goal.
All right, any other comments?
What's the animal house driveway approach on that?
So we we replaced a culvert at Animal House, and uh in doing so, we we kinda reshaped and redesigned that driveway. And uh, so we we do need to protect our right of way, our pavement, and we do need to get some blacktop back in there. It it is all within the right of way, it's not their driveway, I'm not paving someone's driveway, the whole thing, it's just, it's just the approach, so.
Are they right on the black, are they right on that strip of concrete, do they do the south of it?
They're to the south of that, yep.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Second to that. So.
Uh, Jim did.
Jim, okay, thank you, I didn't catch that. All right, um, your packet is a memo from um. An E D A. At our last meeting, we we went into our uh end of May meeting with a request to take, start to look at our twenty-twenty-six budget proposal. Uh, so we've put some time at our meeting to formulate uh what you see in your packet. Uh, it's not meant to be a an action item, but it is something you'll probably see later on when we do our workshops uh for the twenty-twenty-six budget. And at the same time, we also talked about, uh, you saw the testimonials in there from the various developers, um, other um E D As. Southeast Minnesota together, you're just um. Meant to share with the the uh, share with the council the importance of an E D A, and so that's why we asked for the the testimonials, and so they were provided. And we've included those in the packet for you to mercurous. All right.
The budget request, um, so for the other committees, other departments, this is, this is awesome. This is what was requested um from everybody to put forward. Um, so we can take these, this budget request into our budget meetings, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really nice to be able to do that.
Yeah, we kind of, yeah, we missed.
Full picture, so.
We missed last month on that, we were supposed to have a workshop before the council meeting. And I know on that one, fire was gonna be there to do that, and first responders as well. Um, I'd like to find a way that we might be able to pull that in too, so that they can do that possibly. Next council meeting, come in an hour early.
Probably.
New at five-thirty?
Maybe. Tuesdays and Thursdays are very difficult for me to add on to right now, um. But that is exactly what I wanna see, like I wanna be able to see um this from fire, I wanna see this from first responders. I think it it is great, it's not um, nothing's, yeah, obviously, nothing's guaranteed, but it's gonna help us shape the budget. And so this is. Um, but yeah, the workshops, this, that's where we would like to have these presented, so.
Johan, will that work for you, for doing this?
What day was it, sorry?
Uh, the next council.
Fifteenth?
July something.
Not that I'm gonna work and be able to make five thirty, uh, the fifteenth work, but I can do, I could even do the Wednesday or Monday of that week. But Tuesdays aren't gonna work. Thursdays aren't really gonna work.
We can still.
They don't even necessarily have to be um.
I think we can still do quorum.
Yeah, you guys can make quorum, I mean, you don't need quorum for a workshop either, though.
Yeah, so that, we can do that, move ahead of that, so.
Conflict on the sixteenth, but the fifteenth's okay.
But I think this is just a paper trail of your wish lists and all the department's wish lists and committees, how they wanna do it. And that's the stuff we wanna look through before we start really shaping the budget.
I think the uh water and sewer we've put together on Fox.
So some.
The Philly side of it, and parks and trails, there's been something proposed too, so we think that's. So we're gonna, so we're gonna bring this to the, that budget work, that budget meeting then?
You mean the workshop?
Yeah.
We can discuss it there and more in depth, if you have any questions or, um, but but E D A had it, so they threw it into the packet for this, for this meeting.
So we table it for till that meeting?
There's no, there's no action on it, it's just a.
F Y I, that's what we discussed. Questions, answering, whatever.
In there, it would be nice to talk, there's some rail planning and just making sure that parks and trails are looped in somehow. It looks like it's more Douglas Trail, but that would be my only other thing, as we think about budget, making sure the right people are aware of these things, because they might have interdependencies.
And some of these are five-year plans, some of these are ten-year items, so it's like, it's just the goals, division of what um they're setting forth. But yeah, I think parks and trails should get looped into that part.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, um, picnic tables? You have a, Kane?
Yeah, a couple items for the parks, some picnic tables, some playground mulch, and some uh playground borders. Uh, I'd like to start uh, start replacing some of those wooden picnic tables, get to the maintenance free ones and and uh. Have all the same tables and same amenities in each park, so it's a stepped approach.
Yeah. How many of them?
Uh, ten.
Know where they're gonna be going, Kane?
Well, they can go anywhere, they can go, uh, you know, I've got sixteen right now that we've spread out, uh, ten more. Gonna spread the love throughout the rest of the parks, so.
Gotta take care of all of them then, basically, or do we need more than that or?
Ten more.
I got.
In the memo there.
Yeah.
I got, I got fifty-three total, fifty-three picnic tables in the city. Sixteen are new and the remainder are old. I'm trying to phase out those old ones with these maintenance free ones.
You know, I was just wondering how many people use fifty-three tables, that's that's where I kinda wonder, do we need fifty-three out there?
We did that perk audit, and a lot of them said there wasn't enough seating.
I just.
And there's probably some, but that was a a big comment of not a good place to go have, you know. Bring snacks and a picnic, because there wasn't enough seating. So that was a lot of comment, we got about thirty-five different responses, so that was one of the the pieces, so.
So with the old tables, I'd like to phase those out, you know, pick the ten worst or uh, and and we can try to auction them off. We can try to get some money out of them, I know it's not a, it's not gonna be a lot, but it's, you know, the price of uh park amenities are are very expensive, so.
Does she have a tab?
Uh, maybe not. Maybe not that.
Fire want them to burn them?
They're they're green trees. I I think we could, we could try to sell them out, right? We could take a couple.
Got them oxygen masks, like what?
Another season, man.
Yeah, I I think, I think the goal would be to try to get, get some, something out of them.
I hope the old ones are only about four hundred pounds apiece, so.
If there's not enough seating, would you consider leaving them out there, the ones that aren't in?
You know, I think I I I'm gonna pick the ten worst, right? And the ones that are falling apart and that we've maintained and we we've added hardware and.
A plank.
Yeah. Yeah.
Re- uh.
Re- uh.
Yeah, each year, each year those wooden ones get like another layer of mold on them, so we we pressure wash them and we dry them out and we. Peel the gum off them and we, you know, all the staples and they just take a beating every year, so. And they've been around for. A a long time. I remember those as a kid, so uh, you know, one on forty years.
Jeff was a pope.
That's right.
Alright, well, thank you. Um. Let's just touch base on. The playground and the border, and we'll just make a motion altogether. I think that's appropriate, so.
Don't get me.
You wanna touch base on the mulch?
So the mulch, we uh currently, we got this playground safe mulch that we've been using in the park playgrounds. Uh it's really good stuff. Seems to last a long time unless it gets flooded. Uh huh, but uh we could definitely use some more in certain playgrounds, some uh, you know, uh. Maintenance, we need to add some every few years cuz it just, it does decompose over time and. You know, under each one of those playsets, you're supposed to have a minimum of twelve inches of of non-compacted mulch, so uh.
So uh those, they're all ground up tires, aren't they?
No, no, we're not using tires. The, you know, the tires were found to be uh carcinogens, so kids didn't like that. Parents didn't like that.
It's like the wood chips.
Well, we got, we got the brand-new wood chips out here. We can throw them away.
Brand-new wood chips.
Brand-new wood chips out here, mulch out here.
We we just add to it, Paul. Those are already the the playground safe mulch. So we we add to that. Like I said, it's it's a maintenance item. Each year, you kinda, you kinda dress up the situation, the the places that get worn out. Like the swings, you know? Yeah, yeah, you you add, you add to it every year.
You have twenty-five thousand in the budget to, is that, is that budgeted for? All this budgeted for?
There's, there's room within parks. Uh, you know, uh. Give me a second here. I can pull up that actual budget.
Just funding available, twenty-nine thousand, six eighteen for the. The safety first ones in the bundle.
It's out of playground. To the memo, under funding available. From the three different areas.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's three different areas there. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna use some from repair, maintenance, grounds, mower, general equipment. We could even, you know, miscellaneous expense and recreational activities. I'd, I'd, I really don't like seeing that miscellaneous expense, you know, note to uh future budget talks. Let's put that into a category. And uh. I think that miscellaneous, it just seems like a lot of extra money.
There's like paper towels and Band-Aids.
Well, especially when you already got a a account that says supplies and gas, oil miscellaneous already, so.
Put them somewhere.
Yeah.
Those items belong somewhere.
You can put them somewhere. That's what I'm getting at.
The border replacement?
So the border replacement, uh a lot of the parks have old rotten wooden timbers and they sit in the ground, they sit, they get wet, they freeze. They're deteriorating, they're, they're in rough shape. So what we've been using uh like for our latest swing sets. Uh it's a plastic tough timber and it uh it doesn't rot, it doesn't fade, and they hold up really good. Uh they come with like a thirty-six inch spike. You spike them into the ground and and configure them how you'd like and. Uh it creates a border between the grass, the ground, and the play area. So. We 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 like them. Uh we we would install them ourselves. Uh. Yeah.
Alright, so I make a motion, we approve um the picnic tables, the playground safe mulch, and the replacement borders.
I'll second that.
More comments?
Still on the budget, right? So covered so much.
It is in the budget.
Any other comments? Those would be nice ads. People appreciate them. Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oohs?
Approved.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Kane.
There's nothing from Employee Rela- Relations Committee. Next is a is a Administrator Report. It's in your. Packet.
Yeah, just I'll touch on a few things here. Um so we are in the go-live process with B S N A. They are in week two of training. Um staff is really, really enjoying themselves. Uh myself included, this product is better than we had hoped for. And it's gonna be able to do a lot, help with budgeting, um help with just, just all around everything. As Kane discussed, the miscellaneous, right? Like, we wanna see this done. It's a lot easier to add in new budget items so we can identify. And make sure that it's gonna properly be spent on what we want it to be spent for as a city. Um so there's a lot of great things happening with that. Really excited about that.
Financial report, the back of the packet is a printout from.
Yep, and we're actually, we've got some new and improved stuff on that. It's still a continuing process even to today. You know, they're working on templates for us. Uh we got the new billing sent out. There's a lot of great options with our utility billing as far as. Uh individuals can set up auto pay so they can pay whenever they want to on their time. Uh we still do the A C H pay where we say, okay, all those who previously had signed up for that auto draft pay. Uh we'll still run a a a bill on our time, usually at the end of the month. On a set date. Um there's also the option, people can go paperless now. You can get your bill mailed, emailed to you directly. So we can save on costs associated with that. Uh there's just a lot of exciting things with this. Um and there's now the ability to view it online and citizens can now, will be able to go online, set up their account. View previous history for their utilities, previous payments, and all that fun stuff. Uh with that, we also got a credit card reader in City Hall now, so we will now be accepting payments for everything. Um with credit card as well, so I know we've had a lot of requests for that over the year I've been here, so just a lot of exciting stuff. Um. We've got Oakwood Meadows with that utility building. They're actually gonna be set up on our billing system now, so hopefully we can ease into that. I think they're up to date on their payments. Less the thirty thousand dollars of interest that is accrued, still working with that. They've been told that council. Um is still wanting that collected and we'll see what happens as we move forward. Um I think they're really trying to get things squared away.
Have they paid any of that outstanding interest?
Not the interest. They've paid the main amounts. Um they wanted to go back, and I think they're trying to just reassess their situation and. Um I think I continue to talk with them and we'll, we'll get it taken care of. Um if not, come the end of the year, we'll have to work with the township to figure out taxing them and put it on their uh assessment for their taxes, so. Um still moving forward with. The uh forensic audit stuff, we've gotten some resolutions. There's additional things going with that. We've got the cost security agreements we voted on today. We had our new C E A representative. Come fu- uh come forward, Kurt. Um Rebecca left. So excited to work with him. He is also the C E A representative, uh E D A rep for Zambroda. I think he's up there three days a week with them. Um so he's got a lot of experience that brings with him, as well as, again, the backing of C E A, so I know the E D A group is really excited to have him. Um and then. See here, Gold Rush, I think it's on the agenda later too for the offices. We do closing the offices during Gold Rush. Uh last year was a nightmare on Thursday and Friday, obviously, they're, they come in, they're usually here Thursday morning, ready to move in. Um so there's really not a lot that can get done during that time. Um let's see here. Yeah, and just city staff's been working very diligently trying to get everything done and. Just keep moving forward with the day-to-day task on top of implementing the new software and.
Why are we closed on the twentieth?
Say what?
Why are we closed on Friday, the twentieth? Juneteenth is Thursday.
B R C thing.
Juneteenth is is a Thursday.
Yeah, we had that, we brought forth that if it's on a Thursday, that that following day would be an admin close.
So is it gonna be a four-hour holiday or an eight-hour holiday?
It's a four-hour admin day.
I would like, and we can, we can talk outside the meeting too, but all day Thursday on the first day of Gold Rush. Um I have no problem with the afternoon being closed, but I know in the morning, um they're still um having to deal with the food permits. And getting those finalized and being sent out to the food vendors. Um now, I. And so, and we also have gathered people coming in for gathering permits in the past, is how it's worked out, so. Yep. And I'm not sure, we could talk with Joanne uh about the food permits, if that work can be done up front on Wednesday, or does it need to be done on Thursday? I do know that's when the food permits are taken around to the different food vendors.
Yeah, and that's, so that's something I worked with Melissa last year on. She's kinda does the food permits, and it's twofold. It's good she works for the city now cuz she can help with that. She's gonna be here dealing with that, but as I explained to her last year, this stuff needs to be done before Thursday morning. Like, we can't be issuing permits Thursday morning. They need to get their vendors in order and have them lined up with all their paperwork submitted before this, so we can get these permits done. So I know Mel's been working on that. Yeah, and so Mel's been working on that, and that should take up a lot of that. But she will be here. We, I mean, she'll be here and O'Kane will be here probably doing stuff with some of the work getting around, so.
Well, to add, right, so add to Ryland's comment about the food permits and stuff. I've, I've seen him come around as late as five o'clock on a, on a Thursday to to do the inspection, the county.
Oh, yeah, they'll do their inspections whenever they, I mean, they'll do them on Saturday. I mean, just whenever they can get to them. Uh but as far as the actual permitting, you know, issuing the permits from our side, I wanna be able to have all that stuff done well before the event occurs. We can't be doing that.
They shouldn't even set up if they don't have a.
Yeah, so. And I know I've been talking with Mel on that and working with her through that to make sure that that's getting done sooner, so.
Okay, alright. Um. Alright, any other comments? With Jason's report, questions? If not, we'll, we had a whole head-on item, the Gold Rush Legends act under unfinished business. For your.
All my.
Questions there before we.
My question, some of my questions there. First off, in in the beginning of.
I, I, I want to make a motion to approve it.
Then we can do a discussion. I make a motion to approve so that we can have a discussion.
And I'll second that.
Okay, okay. Well, what it says in, it says whereas the licenser is the city, that they own the public streets. Now, the city don't own them. There's no, there's no deed to the public streets. They belong to the public. City's just a control of them. City doesn't actually own them.
I got Mel online here, I think if she can talk to this. I know, and maybe Mike can. This was the same agreement that we had last year. All that was changed was the dates. So Mel put this together for Gold Rush, so I know this was the same one we used last year with the legalities that was written up, if you will. Um so.
And for, and okay, okay, for, it shows an exhibit A and page seven of that agreement. And right of way number four. The fifteen-foot setbacks be First Avenue Northwest from West Center Street. Up to here, up to the city, all the way down this first, this block in the fire hall. There is no right-ofways on the side. Five foot. That's a twenty-five-foot right-ofway through there. There is, there is no fifteen-foot at either side that that the city rents out. Regardless of how it was written last year, that isn't right. That should be taken off of there, off of that.
Yeah, I am here, I am here, council, so if there are amendments or suggestions, I I am happy to hear them. Uh Jason was correct in that none of the verbiage in the twenty-twenty-five contract has been altered from the twenty-twenty-four contract that was agreed upon from last season. Uh but if there are concerns, we are, we are happy to work within your amendments as the ordinance allows.
Who am I, who's speaking then?
Mel.
Mel, uh you you know where I live and you know the fire hall block. It's a, that's only a twenty-five-foot right-ofway through there.
Sure, I would, I would have to confirm that with the city. I, I'm not familiar, as familiar with the setbacks in this, in the location you're, you're referencing. Uh but we can certainly alter that.
I just wanna make sure there's no vendors set up along, on the city properties along there, cuz the city has no property along there.
Right, so the maps for Gold Rush um in that area or along that corridor have not changed in probably fifteen years. So whatever you experienced last year is what you will experience this year.
Yeah. I, well, I just, my, my point, my point is, is it's on the map and it shouldn't be. Because, because the city does not control that property. There is, there is a fifteen-foot easement there, utility easement, but Gold Rush isn't a utility. So I'm just, I'm just clarifying that.
Okay.
If you don't clarify it and bring it up, I've had to bring it up before in the past, so. Thank you for.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate the comment and um it is sort of a time-sensitive issue. Gold Rush is coming up, August fifteenth through the seventeenth this year. I feel like waiting to July to approve this year's license uh may not be beneficial for Gold Rush days uh in regards to. Um our application for insurance uh and a few other documents. Um but if you'd like to suggest an amendment, we would be agreeable to that so that we could get the the license agreed to at tonight's meeting.
I'd, I'd like to make an amendment to the. To the uh licensing agreement. That would, that removes, that removes the uh the city owning the property, owning the right-ofways. And the removal of the uh. That's number four, removal of right-ofway number four for the fifteen-foot setbacks for. It's not, it's not the entire, it's not that entire strip. It's the block from First Avenue Northwest to City Hall corner, the fire hall corner. The rest of it to the south of there, I I believe that is too.
First Avenue Northwest.
First Avenue Northwest is what runs straight south of the Dunleavy doors here. Down in the west, north, on the west side of the fire.
First Street to Second Street Northwest.
From center, from Center Street up to here. That's a fifteen, that's a twenty-five-foot right-ofway.
So just for clarification, that's removing um or not removing number four, but just identifying number four to be. First Street to West Center Street or West Center West. We're going south of your corner.
Going south from here.
That is what my notes indicate too, Ryland.
I can be from here. This part over here, right, is different, is a different stretch.
I was just saying, identifying what we want, not what we don't want.
Right.
That we can take care of that.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay.
And so then. On the agreement, can I speak to that quickly? Um mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Um so on the attachments, I didn't prepare those. Those were just prepared by staff last year and attached, so I'll just defer to. The city on that, on the, that whereas clause, that recital. Um I think the city does own the rights of way. I think the agreement says that we own the streets and maybe that's technically not quite true. I think we all kind of understand what the agreement means, though, but if we wanna change it. Um you could just write it this way, the licensor and then strike the the words is the owner of. And replace that with the word controls. The licensor controls, so it would read the licensor controls the public streets and parks. In the city of Ornocko County of Olmsted, state of Minnesota. And I think that is, that's accurate.
I can agree with you there, Mike. Control, because there is no deed to the streets.
Well, we, we do own the right of way, though. We, I mean, it's not a fee title ownership, but I think it's um. Maybe splitting hairs a bit, but um I think using the word controls is um. Accurate, more general and accurate. So and then on the uh, on the exhibits, I don't have any, any um. Issue with that. I I agree that if there, if it's incorrect, you should probably make it correct if you're able to do that. Um if we know, if we have that information.
I can take care of the drawing.
Yeah, cuz I think those were submitted by Gold Rush last year. We didn't have anything to do with that as a city, so.
And just speaking as a representative of Ornocko Gold Rush. And just speaking as a representative of Ornocko Gold Rush Days Board, I, we, I would be in agreement with what, uh, Attorney Filarity is suggesting as well.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I think it's just a matter of approving the agreement, subject to altering that one bullet point in the, in the exhibit. So that it's accurate, um, and then just give Jason the authority to do that. He can look into it and figure it out. And if it needs to be changed, he can change it. And then change the, the first page to the word controls, like I had dictated.
Why? Well, you accept those changes from the motion.
Yeah, I, I make friendly changes and they're, I.
Any other comments, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as a bid with those comments regarding the the right of way and the language on the first page by control of the streets. All those in favor, seeing if I've been saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approved? Thank you, Mike, Mel?
Um, Mayor, I'm going to duck out of the meeting now.
Yeah.
Good night, yep.
Thank you.
So once we get this done, we'll, we'll send it out to everybody, once we finalize the revisions on it and get it signed and everything, make sure you guys get it covered.
All right, um, next item is a new business. The submission form.
That was mine, I can talk about it. Um, it's more just for a conversation and I think with Jason's administrator update. Just making it best practice that on a quarterly basis, we provide, um, an in-depth review of all of the um, different funds and where we're at from a financial perspective. Also including the bonds and, and the hundred on there. Again, I know with the new software, there's going to be an ability to drill down and get some more of that, so. We even talked a little bit about doing some demos of that, but I do think we should continue to, to have a more in-depth review of, of our finances on a pretty regular cadence. It's in the packet, but I think sometimes just spending some time going over maybe where we're getting close to what we've allocated for budget and having some difficult conversations, I think is going to be wise as we move forward as well as for planning for the next year, so more just a discussion. But I do think we, we should put that on our radar. And maybe quarterly is too much or not enough, but, but start to make that best practice.
I think that's great. I think quarterly is a good way to look at it and, and that way we're, we're jumping. I think that's, that's a good thing quarterly.
And I'll say with the new software program, it'll be a lot easier to do that for us, so. Um, it is just going to offer a lot more functionality. And then like she talked about, we'd like to bring you all in kind of one at a time so we can show you the new software. Um, but also I think we're going to, once we get more comfortable with it, we'll do this, but also put together a little presentation for council as well that highlights some of the stuff so you guys can, and everybody else can see the software and see the functionality of it and, and, uh, what it can do for, and what it will do for the city, so.
So do we want to set special council meetings to do the budget reviews or adding it to the existing?
We're going to add it in. I mean, it'll, it'll be short, they're not going to be, it's just going to be, you know, informational and talk about it and back questions, we can go from there, but be able to do, do a little bit more, so.
I even think of like the stocks and bonds and other things, like just so we kind of have an understanding of where the money is at and what's in those coffers, so we can start to make sound decisions as we move forward too. So it's not just line item by line item, but getting a more in-depth thorough review of, of all the funds.
Okay. All right, excellent. I think it's a fair approach and it's better. Get, just put more structure into, or not.
Can I ask just so we're action focused, like what are, what's like a good time to like set that first one? Like, I don't want to push, I know you guys are learning, but I also want to put a date out there so that we can hold people to that.
Let's go for August to give us time to really get a better understanding of it, and then I think I'll try to get a presentation together by August for council as well. So it'll kind of be twofold, so we can walk through some of the budget stuff and show, actually show it to you all.
Rachel, can we put that on? All right, thank you.
So here's the, the.
The August council meeting is going to be, excuse me.
You think there may be a special meeting just dedicated for that special agenda item?
It's up to you guys, whoever you want to do it, I mean, but we can do it during a council meeting or?
The August, the August council meeting is going to be Tuesday after Gold Rush. When you shut down two days, a day and a half.
Can you do it after, or after a meeting too?
I think we, as we go into August and September, with our goal of having our preliminary budget ready for Sunday County at the end of September. And like we did last year, I think we set up three, four, or five different workshops for budget, but we probably hit three of them.
Well, and that's, this is, this is kind of twofold, because one, part of the reason we're doing a lot of this stuff, we're already taking care of that, but two, with the new software, the budgeting portion of this is a lot more user friendly. We're going to be able to implement and bring in and, and it's hard to describe without, you know, being able to show you right off the bat, but, you know, just being able to have that where we can present and bring in and mess with the numbers and play with the numbers for the future years.
Right. I'm, I'm all for that, I just wondered, my only quip for comment was that, because you could have a lot of meetings going on in August, September, so we need to be mindful of our time for everybody to, to be aware of them, so.
That's why I said I get, they should be fine at the council meeting to do it and just plan on probably fifteen, twenty minutes of time to show the program and walk through different budgets, so. Because we're in the process too of, he is, um, you know, getting together, finally, you know, really getting together the six hundred and six oh two budgets and really being able to dive into those, just, there's a lot going on, and then he's been working hard at that. When he has time, so, but.
But, all right. Daniel. Your vision, mission?
Yes, so, uh, so this kind of rolls in with, um, budget prep and it, but it goes further than that as well. I don't know if we have part or lies on, Jason, did they say they were going to be on one of them?
I thought they were going to try to be on, they didn't say, but.
So, uh, so basically what, what they do is they will meet with us individually and, um, I believe Jason and Kane, so there's everybody on the council. And, um, they will, uh, work with us to, um, set some, some goals and visions and mission statements for the city, um, and do some strategy planning uh, with the city. So basically, they're going to meet with us individually. Um, get everybody's individual take, and then they'll sit down with us in a six-hour discussion session. Where at the end of this, the goal is that the five of us have a clear vision of where the city um, should be moving to and what steps we need to take to get it to that. And so that, this will, timeline is, hopefully if we, if we approve it today, the timeline can get this whole thing started and done before our first budget meetings, and so we can actually create next year's budget. Um, with a little bit more vision, um, as opposed to, um, piecemealing decisions together as we go out through the year and try and find money and, um, even justifying if we have increases in certain areas of budgets. Um, justifying to the community, this is why and this is where it's going and this is how you'll see it, so. Um, did you have anything else to add to that, Jason? Because I thought their presentation was, I thought it was really good. I thought that, that, uh, they could really help us, um, kind of move forward with a vision of the city, organized vision.
Yeah, so this was kind of the, you know, the, the groundwork that's needed for the city, um, to help, you know, guide itself through the coming years as we start to build these CIP plans, these processes. Um, having this mission and vision statement will be able to, you know, the, the committees and commissions and city staff will be able to say, okay, you know, yes, this falls in line with what city council has set forward, or no, this doesn't, let's try to work something else. So I think it's, it's very important, you know, and, and having an, an outside facilitator come in and do this, uh, I, I think is important as well. Um, you know, it, it, they offer a lot of different things in their process, you'll see in the proposal. It's a multi-day, multi-month kind of thing, but basically they'll meet with individuals, usually on teams or something like that. Uh, one-on-one to get their information and kind of talk with them about what they see for the city and their goals and their wants and desires and where the city's at or where it's going. Um, and then they do that, they bring that all together in a collaboration for a day event for about six to eight hours. And that's where they work with you folks, the city council, to bring you all together and basically bring everybody onto the same page. You know, create a, a team environment, create teamwork, uh, and really help build the council up together. And then when they're done with that, they take all the information and they will put it into a proposal, uh, to give back to council. Um, I didn't get the, the proposal example they brought in here, I do have one, if anybody's interested in that, I can send that out. Uh, it shows from one of their other cities what they did, it's about an eight to ten-page proposal. And it breaks down, you know, everything that you all go through in your time with them, you know, and, and kind of what they, they took from that and what was taken from it from the council, and they put it into words and put it into a, a process that can be followed for the city. Uh, it's kind of a, a guiding format. I've talked with a lot of city administrators and city leaders in the region and across the state, um, and there's a lot of them that do this yearly. And while I don't know that we're necessarily there yet, I do think this is something we need to do. It's been on my radar for a while that I think would benefit the city tremendously. And so this was kind of just an initial reach out to them and then it snowballed into this, we had a quick meeting with them, and here we are with it. Um, but I know, you know, it's something I'm excited for, for the city to be able to grab onto and use and help guide it for its future, because change is coming.
And their timeline was very flexible, um, but we, when we had this discussion, we thought it was going to be the most beneficial to have this done and finalized before we go into this budget. Um, so we're not doing this budget, then maybe doing this and going, oh wait, wish we would have done the budget this way, a little different, or.
And, and I, I, I see that, it's just we're, we're really getting slammed time-wise with what's going on here and I think trying to push this in before we even get started on the budget is a little bit too much to do and, and, and to physically get it in there, get, especially if you're going to have one-on-one with everybody off of that stuff. Um, I would, you know, um, say I would like to do it afterwards in the fall after Gold Rush and everything else that way. I know it's after the budget part of it, but it's not the finalize part of the budget.
Right.
Okay, you know, but I don't think that this setting this up is going to make a difference after the budget, honestly. I think we need to, to run the budget on what we have to do, you know. Um, again, I can, I can see this and, and the cost isn't bad for what it is for the six thousand if they put all that stuff into it with what's going on, you know, but I just think trying to push it, it's going to be too much at this time.
I have a couple of questions. One, I think this is a great idea. I think, I think some of these organizational things that they are promising is something that we're lacking, and I think we see that in some of our committee groups. They don't know what they're accountable for. They're, they have a hard time making those decisions. Couple of comments, um, where's the six thousand going to come from? We thought about where we're going to pull that from, and maybe we should consider an RFP, because I actually think six thousand is high.
Okay, I think an RFP, I think, I, I go with, uh, Marie, I think that, that's, that's, that's good to do that. Just to get another, you know, quote that there is for somebody, I think that, that.
And, and not saying that it's probably not time well spent, but to me, that seems a, a little bit high just from what I do professionally. I think that, that we could probably, there's other, um, groups that do this too, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'm totally, uh, okay with looking, looking and getting a RFP together and going, um, to the timeline, I think that if we can make it work before we start with the workshops, then we won't find that we have time wasted in the first couple of workshops. That's, I guess that was the the point that I was making. I, I know we are, we're stacked up and.
Yeah, it's, it's just the summer goes really, especially with Gold Rush getting going and everything else that way.
Yeah, but I think if we're going to reach out, we're going to get RFPs, then we're looking at, you know, July, August as a beginning start date anyway. Um, so we can, we can see if this timeline can even be condensed, if we need it to be.
Okay.
Like, go later, but condense it.
How, how soon can we get an RFP out on that, Jason?
Um. I think it depends what we're looking for, right? I mean, if we're looking for, you know, team building, goals, mission, vision, and then priorities with like tangible goals and timelines. I mean, that's a, probably a quick turnaround time, but if we're looking at other thing, I mean, that's kind of what they're offering, I guess, so.
I guess I'm of the opinion, I think it's, it's needed, I think it's worthwhile. You know, we talked about the time commitment, but from our personal time commitment, it's, as I see it, is our individual team meetings, which could be thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, and then the six-hour session. It's upon them to put all this together, and I think that's, uh, six thousand dollars is, is, you know, that's, um, maybe, um, fifty man-hours between thirteen, right, then you're down to twenty-five man-hours a person if it's the two people, so I, I don't have a problem with the cost, I think it's, we need to clarify where we come from, but I do think it's, whether it's from a developmental or personnel or um, financial administration or something like that, but I do think this is warranted. If we don't do it now and we then we'll be doing the twenty-twenty-six budget like we're, we've done in the past. It's going to be hit and miss. Granted, we're doing some things in place to help that process, but I really think it's just, it's, it's critical to, um, where we're at in, in our Ornocko planning that we take the initiative to make this initiative or to initiate this type of activity, because I think there's just a lot of good things that can come out of it. And it's, it's, I'm sure there's documentation that they'll give us as well, that we can keep for future years for referencing, uh, going forward. The one question I would have is that, after they submit the final report, is there any follow-up that they mentioned about six months, three months from, from the final report, just to see if there's any questions or things that were missed and should be missed or?
I don't remember any, any follow-up discussion. Um, this was a pretty quick, um, phone call and it ended up being with, ended up with Jason and I going, well, can you, do you think you could draft something that we could present to council, um, in a very short amount of time? So we didn't give them a, a lot of heads up to do this as well, so I think those are all great questions.
Because it was just supposed to be a meet and greet meeting.
Yeah, it was just.
And it just turned into, hey, this is really awesome. As far as putting together an RFP, I mean, it, it depends on what council wants. If council says, go ahead, put together an RFP and put it out. And we probably get one in the next few weeks put together. Um, you know, two, three weeks and get put out and start getting information back. If you want me to wait till council, I mean, wait till council bring it and then put it out, but there's just the delay in the process, so.
Well, I just think it's trying to push it again before the budget is where I'm, I'm looking at, at things, and I don't want to be the way we were this last year. We were behind the eight ball on trying to do the budget, okay? And a lot of the stuff that was done was done without our participation, and I think council should participate in all the stuff that's going on that way with it. Um, again, I think we're just trying to push it too quick. I think an RFP is, is the right way to go, just to get an idea. You know, you know, and, and to do it, if we're going to do it, let's, let's let's do it the right way and we, you know, check it out, I guess.
To me, some of these things are not just budget related, right? Like, we're, we're trying to work as a council together so we can support our community better and we can understand where everyone's trying to move forward towards, and to me, yes, budget's a piece of that, but it's even the inner workings and the operational efficiencies that I think we have opportunities to do. So it's not, I mean, those things are not time sensitive, right? This is, these will be big changes. This is, these will be big changes and that change management piece is gonna be huge. So we have to be committed. We can't get lost in the shuffle of all the busyness of budget. Like we have to make sure that as these things come forward for tactics that we're really living them and we're pushing them out to the individual committees too. So that's gonna take some effort to do.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. It's not just budget related. Um, and I think that was one of my comments was to, to this group was saying, you, this is gonna be a very tight timeline. But if we could get it done to help, cause I'd rather do six hours here than eight hours in November meeting for our last budget, right? For our last budget.
Again, I, I think, I think Marie's got it right. You're, you're putting all the weight on the budget. And it, I don't think the weight is gonna be put that much on the budget is what we're gonna do with the groups and the committees, that that's more important than what it is. Cause dollar-wise, I don't think it's gonna make that much difference off of the budget.
Yeah, uh, uh, dollar-wise, it's not gonna change the budget. I guess that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it's gonna be the time that we're spending on the budgets. If we're going in with a, with an actual vision of growth, then we're not gonna be spending that last November meeting working eight, you know, having an eight-hour meeting in November. Is it a December meeting? I think my November meeting was along with.
Yeah, no, and, and again, I think this whole thing, I think let's do an RFP, okay? You're, you know this business, okay? And, and I'm gonna, uh, lean on you with your expertise to see what we can do and come up with the right people.
And I told Jason, I'm willing to do this, cause that's what I do, but it also would be good to have an external party, right? Someone that's not in the mix and knows some of these things. Um, but in the meantime, if we wanna start that conversation, I'm happy to facilitate. All of these things are additive. They're not like once and done and they're not, like, it's really the puzzle of the, all the pieces coming together. So there's things we could work on to get us there. It would make their job a lot easier. I mean, all the things that we're doing with the committees to say, what's your one, three, five, ten-year plan? That's gonna be instrumental as they start to say, okay, we really wanna hit X, Y, Z in, in our three-year plan. Well, what is that gonna take? What are the tactics we need to do today to make sure that our parks are, you know, appropriate for all ages, right? And what's that gonna look like? And we're all on the same page. And so I think there's things we could do to get us going and have some of that, that without a company, I'm willing to help. But a- again, that puts me, I, I don't know if that makes a weird situation for it or not, but I offer that too.
So regarding the money, if you look at the financial administration, um, your packet, uh, under financial administration, there's a subcontracted services that's budgeted six thousand dollars and nothing's been used for so far this year. So I, I, to me, I think the money is, is there. I can appreciate the RFP, but if we're talking six thousand or fifty-five hundred dollars or whatever, I think we're talking hundreds of dollars difference that we, it's just taking time to get that. I don't think it's, it's, if it was a twenty thousand dollar project, yeah, we need RFP. But for six thousand, I think it's, yes, it's, it's six thousand dollars. We have a line item and cover the subcontracted services, um, that I think is very appropriately used for what we wanna do here. And, uh, I just think that it's, it's a professional program. Not that you're not professional.
No offense.
But you probably don't have fifty man-hours put in that these people would be able to do for us. And I think it's just, and I agree with Daniel and I think it's just a vision going forward of how we can do a better job of preparing our budget. And, and, uh, doing it more in a structured way than, um, what we've always done in the past. I mean, this isn't, we did it last year. It's been, every year's been like that. So I just think that we can, we should look at a different approach and different approach comes of a vision of how we wanna do that. So that's why I would support, um, support this approach.
And then the timeline is, is very much, um, uh, tentative, like it doesn't have to be this timeline if, if.
Well, and, and that's part of what I'm saying. You're, you're, you're pushing a lot in.
We can either spread it out, start it, start it now, spread it out, or we can push it off for a little bit. Um, I think that I, they, they thought their timeline would be very flexible. I knew that it was gonna be very tight, um.
Yeah, I think the timeline is really up to us.
Yeah, it is. It's up to us. We don't have, uh, we, by agreeing to this, we're not necessarily saying that this, finalizing this timeline here. Well, so I just, I thought it was something that it was exciting to bring to everybody and to say, hey, I think this, this is something that we're, we've been working towards this. We really have. And to, to really get somebody in here and nail it down.
And, and I'm, and I'm not negative to this whole idea at, at all, okay? I just, um, I know what we're gonna be like in the summer, right? Okay, with, and, and it's like, guys, you have no idea. And trying to push it too quick isn't gonna give the right result we wanna get out of it either. You know, and, and so if we're gonna invest, let's, let's do it. I mean, again, I'm not trying to delay it for any reason, but these people don't have a gold rush that's going on or the, the other stuff that's happening. That's what we have to deal with, with the city. Okay, and I mean, we've got some big stuff coming up. We've got the fireworks, okay? We got all kinds of things that, that are happening during this summertime, but to try to, to push that, so.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's a very worthwhile timing and the cost. Um, and, you know, if we approve this, I think that's great. Um, if we, if we don't approve it, that's an opportunity for us to, to miss something that we should have looked at to have a, a well-thought-out budget and, and to do it next year. Um, I think we've missed the opportunity. Not that it wouldn't be, if I use last year, it'd be next year too, but, but. So I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, DDA Human Resources Goal Setting Process Proposal and using the subcontracted services account for six thousand dollars under Financial Administration. Didn't we already have a proposed, didn't we already have a motion in place? What's that? Didn't we already have a motion in place? Uh, discussion for no motion.
I guess you, you're adding where the funds are coming from.
Yes.
Well, which is, but, but the other thing that you're missing is.
I'll, I'll second.
Uh, cause we don't have a timeline and, and again, I'm, I'm concerned with, with the time situation that there is. It's just, it's not gonna fit together with what we need to do to get the budget started and try to do this ahead of time.
Would it be reasonable to, uh, approve this and then ask them to come present to us and figure out what a timeline would be at the July meeting? And then we're looking at, and we're looking at.
I'll, if we approach them and say, we recognize it's a time issue, but we approved it tonight and we would like to have all of the personal virtual meetings done by one July.
That's, that's. No, it's not gonna happen. I'm gone next week. I'm, I'm sorry, it won't work. It won't work.
I'll be honest, that's, that's really fast.
There's no way.
I'm just throwing it out for an idea.
No, it's, I, again, I think that, uh, if we wanna do this, then let's push it after Gold Rush, okay? Uh, what's going on? I'm, I'm just, you know, I don't think.
Who's involved with Gold Rush?
Well, I'm just saying, when, 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 I, I understand that. And, and I'll take the time that there is to do it, so I don't have another job, so I can, can do that, to meet with it. I'm just looking at how quick we're trying to do this to come up. I just think it, it's too quick. That's, that's just fine.
Our personal commitment, our individual personal commitment is very limited to a virtual meeting and a six-hour presentation sometime in July, August or whatever thing, in July. Okay, I think it's. Okay, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, significantly saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose?
Amen.
Not approved?
The motion to send our RFPs out, is that something we can do? That's something we wanna do?
I think we should. I think, again, I think this is important work. So the reason I denied this is I think it's important, however, I think we should be intentional about this. We shouldn't rush to do this because the more we rush, we're gonna lose things. We're not gonna be on the same page. We're not gonna be a city council and summer's busy and everyone said that. But I, we, we should also spend the time and do it and do it right. Otherwise, we're, we've spent that money. We've put things on paper, but we're not living those and we're not actioning on them. So I, I mean, I, I appreciate the timeline, but I think we should be intentional. And this might be a great twenty-twenty-six thing too, right? And that, and again, this has nothing to do with budget. It helps with priorities. But I think some of these things are also operational gaps that we faced that are outside of, of just budget and things that we need. So, I mean, that, that could be another thought of, maybe we don't try to get it in. We do it the end of the year, twenty-twenty-six, early in the year and start to, to set us up for success. We have that budget. We've worked with our committees to say, here's your priorities for the year and loop all that back in. Um, that could be another approach too. Again, I think this is important work.
And then that's why I want, I don't wanna rush it. That's, and, and I think, Marie, you're right on with that. I, I agree a hundred percent.
So one of the, one of the costs, um, cause we discussed having the committees uh, involved in this, but that would increase the cost. The more number of people, the higher the cost. So we've limited it to the five of us, Jason and Kane. Did we have seven? Was that our number?
Yep, it's council admin.
And so, um, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. I think we have to be intentional with it. I was, um.
And I'm happy to write the RFP if it's time.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I, you know, I, I definitely approve whatever we decide to do and, and I'm all for it. I just thought maybe it was something we could take care of now and, and, uh, whatever we come up with, I'm sure it'd be fine, so. Alright, um.
Do we need a vote for the RFP to put together a RFP for this? Or is that just a, that's what we're doing?
The council's desire. Alright, we'll start working on that.
Thank you.
Good job on playing this stuff out.
Uh, credit goes to Jason. He just called me and he's like, you wanna meet these people? And I'm like, yeah, this, cause it's right up the, and right up the alley of the mission visions and getting the budget stuff together and the three, five-year, ten, so. I'm excited to see where we go with it. I really am, whatever the timeline is.
Alright, uh, next time for the consent agenda. The motion we approved, the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right. Seeing none, all in favor, significantly saying aye?
Aye. I wanna make the motion to adjourn.
We, all in favor, significantly saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Alright. Thank you very much. Eight forty-five, eight fifteen.
Open your mouth, yes.
Well, not too much, that's, that's, that is the fastest council meeting that I've met in all of it.
I'd just like to say something real quick. She put together an amazing council back of this month, so.
It was really nice.
Diligent is, is getting, you've got it online. Now there's a lot of access that's gonna be.